Scott coming in.
He's on that sim right there, yeah.
I see.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the East Hemphill Township Board Supervisors Meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. If you're calling into the meeting, I'd like to encourage you to remain on the call, but to also go to the township website by Googling East Hemphill Township and to log into our Zoom meeting following instructions on our homepage. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply. The meeting will be run by a chairman who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Everyone on Zoom will have their microphones muted in order for the audio to be clearly heard. During the meeting, both those present online, only one person at a time speaks and they must be recognized by the chairman. Many speaking at the same time may combine with background noise makes meetings like this impossible to hear on Zoom. This rule will be strictly enforced. For people utilizing Zoom, you'll need to use the chat function to be recognized by the chairman. To be recognized with the chat function, you will must be either a presenter who's on the agenda or a resident or business owner of East Hemphill Township, who wishes to comment on an agenda item where you must text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on the staff for the chairman to be recognized. The steps to speak utilizing Zoom are simple. Request recognition by a chairman to speak via chat. Once recognized by a chairman, unmute your microphone. After receiving recognition, speak. When done speaking, mute your microphone. Any Zoom violations of any dimensions rules will be deemed to be acting out of order and your microphone will be muted immediately without warning. Continued violations will result in you being electronically removed from the meeting. Robert's rules apply for those attending the meeting in person. All voting tonight will be done by roll call votes and sure all votes are properly accounted for. Roll call will be conducted by a township manager. There will be no action taken to any non-agenda items of a non-emergency, non-urgent nature that arise during the meeting. All such items will be referred to staff and be handled at a later meeting. East Hemphill Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner of a township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for the meeting man purposes or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom and tenants. Comments limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. No action will be taken in the public comment period for non-agenda items with all issues referred to staff. We thank you for your patience and now we will go to our first agenda item. Please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge. Now the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Think for the first order of business before we get into our agenda items. We actually do have five members present for tonight's meeting. Mr. Wigglesworth is actually participating in the meeting via Zoom. He is coming back from New York City as we speak. So there are five present in tonight's meeting. So with that, we will move on to our first agenda item and that's the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to approve routine items that usually require very little debate or discussion. So with that, I will open up the consent agenda.
Scott, just a point of order. Do we have an item that we need to add to tonight's agenda?
Yeah, we got that for number three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Mr. Chairman and Board, I would like if our chief fire official could explain for my benefit and possibly others, the role of the agency duty officer that he refers to in his report.
He was.
Kotzmeier, are you there?
He was planning on attending. I don't know if he's on the call yet. I don't see him listed.
Ms. Garber, could you happen to know yourself?
I'm here.
Yeah, he's on his cellphone. Can you hear him?
Yes.
You can hear him, yes.
Go ahead, John.
The joint duty officer was essentially a program that was set up and written as sort of a kind of like a protocol set up a little while ago. And essentially what it is is kind of like a sharing from an incident management perspective. In other words, incidents as the escalator larger incidents from an incident management perspective may require several officers. And this allows for kind of inter-agency or interdepartmental cooperation from department to department as well as assisting in, you know, duty officers or covering calls during days or evenings or whatever. And the idea consistently. And that way, we're all kind of doing things across all departments the same way. It really is to give some relief to some of the officers that have been doing this for quite a few years. You know, as well as again, giving them time if, you know, things come up in their life or they can't, you know, cover a duty assignment or whatever. And then there's other folks that other officers that are able to do that. But essentially it's twofold. We do provide training. We're providing training, incident management, as well as we're also going to use this as a means to train some of our younger officers, some of our line officers. So that as they, you know, progress throughout their, you know, kind of their careers in volunteer service that, you know, if they aspire to become a deputy chief or a chief officer, they'll have the training as well.
Okay. Well, thank you. And also, could you, do you know the origin of the 10% contribution by a fire station for a new piece of apparatus?
Yes, essentially when I looked at options for financing for apparatus and I kind of went down the lease purchase option. That was kind of like one of the quotes or the quotes that they came up with. It's the most common one that they see from fire departments that are utilizing the lease purchase option. Again, there's others, a myriad of options that you can choose, but the 10% from the from the organization or the 10% down was a typical thing. And that's what I listed on there, 10% down. And then remaining financed over a period of years through a lease, by lease purchase option.
So it's somewhat of an industry standard, one might say. Okay.
Yeah, that's what, that's what they're saying they typically see is that these are financed. I mean, you can obviously, I mean, if more money can be put down, but that's typically what they see, a 10% down and then the remainder is the lease option, the lease purchase.
And your, your statement indicated the municipalities would cover the 90%.
That would be a goal. That would be a goal to assist the departments again. You know, with the officers, one of the single greatest expenses to the departments is apparatus. And from a fire chief's perspective, it's difficult all the time to figure out, you know, even over a period of years, where that money is going to come from because the prices just continue to increase. Even the peers, as I mentioned in the Fire Commission meeting, in June, there's going to be an increase. It's a commodities increase based on the, you know, materials. And they're going to have to pass that on to the consumer. And as such, we're going to see, you know, a price increase. And then they just exponentially, like any large piece of equipment like that. And especially when you talk fire EMS, the price just goes up exponentially. And so it's difficult and it's, you know, looking at a way to help relieve that somewhat can, can take a lot of pressure off of a fire chief for sure.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Wigglesworth, go ahead.
Um, I'd like to have a deeper discussion on what Mr. Lefever brought up later.
Understood.
Under the manager's report or board working group reports.
Okay, we can talk about that later in the meeting.
Absolutely.
Is that good, Mr. Wigglesworth?
I think he's breaking up.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Yes.
Anything else for the consent agenda, guys? Okay, I entertain the motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Lefever, Ms. Schweitzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the dice have it five, nothing. Okay, next up, we have two items to take action on to add to the agenda. Ms. Schweitzer, if you'd like to explain both of them, please.
Received another request for National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant submittal. That grant submittal is due tomorrow. This second one is from the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation, which is affiliated with the Conestoga Greenway project that you have, are familiar with. So I'd like to add that to the agenda. The second item that I'd like to add to the agenda is a request to name me as the manager of the liquor license at Four Seasons Golf. And that's just an interim position until the liquor license is transferred. So those two items I'd like to add to the agenda.
Okay, any discussion at the board?
On the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation request for support, are they requesting any type of financial support?
Not from us. It's a grant strictly for design and engineering. They're hoping for about four or 500,000 to get kickstart the project.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, I entertain the motion to add these two items to the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. Ms. Schweitzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the dice have it five, nothing. We will add this to the end of the action items.
Thank you.
And please remind me when I forget. Thank you. Okay, next up, we're going to move up to the action items and I'm going to use the chairman's prerogative to juggle the order around. First thing we're going to talk about is the Hogs and Heroes Kids Bike-A-Thon. So Ms. Schweitzer, if you'd like to start and it looks like we have a couple of people on the audience to talk about that. And I guess Ms. Garber too.
Yeah, I believe Diane is prepared to address that. She's been working closely with them.
Okay, Ms. Garber, floor is yours.
Thank you. Hogs for Heroes PA 2 Junior Chapter has requested to use a portion of Ahur Park for a service project that they would like to have their juniors do a children's bike-a-thon. The date they've requested is June 19th from approximately 8:30 to 12:30 in the morning. And that junior bike-a-thon would help to raise money to support law enforcement and military organizations, including some that they've donated to in the past, the COPS program, Angels of Americans Fallen, Lancaster City Police Canine Unit, and also Lancaster City Mounted Police. The event would take place on the east side of the park, as you can see shown in the picture that John put up on the screen. And what it would do would allow them to have a continuous loop of trail for the kids to bike. And the event would begin on the backside or the far east side of the park along the gravel lot. That would allow parents to pull in, park, remove bikes, have a registration tent, water, et cetera there. And then the laps would traverse the park from there. The two yellow spots that you see marked would be traffic control points managed by their members. And then the red marks are where we would block off a portion of the front parking lot so that the kids would have safe passage from one end of the parking lot to the other. We chose the outer loop of the parking lot to ensure that handicapped access was still readily available to the dream park portion of the park. With us this evening are two wonderful ladies from the, both the PA Hogs for Heroes Chapter 2 or Junior PA 2 Chapter, as well as the ladies, as well as one of the ladies from the PA 1 Adult Chapter. And they're here to answer any questions you might have about their organization or why they chose the park. They are local to East Hemphill. The kids are local to our school district and our surrounding area. And so I bring this before you this evening for your review. And if you feel so inclined, your approval.
Yours.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us come before you. My name is Teresa Dregger and this is Connie Ray. She, I am actually the state IT for Pennsylvania for Hogs and Heroes and she is the national comptroller. Together we make up the junior committee. And Hogs and Heroes stands for honoring our giving spirit and our heroes are our first responders and military. And Connie and I have spent a lot of time working together to find ways to instill those values in our youth. And we in our, looking at different charities, different events. Yes, we are a motorcycle enthusiast group. We are not an MC. We are not a 1%er. We are a 501(c)(3). We donate over $25,000 a year to COPS alone as a national foundation. Three of our chapters here in Pennsylvania are doing COPS rides and we would like to do this event here for our youth. I am a resident of 1301 Crown Vetch Drive right here in Landisville. My four, three children and this one are here as well. They attend Landisville, the Landisville School System. They're very excited. Our neighborhood is very excited for this event. We've been talking about hoping to plan it. I know some of our, lots of our neighbors are firemen, are police officers. They're all very excited to work together. Angels of America's Fallen is a charity that specifically benefits children whose parents were military or first responders and the parents have passed away. So that would be the charity for this event. Our juniors also do support the Lancaster Canines. I know that our troop, we just did a pizza sale. Our kids raised over close to $1,000 together to donate to the, and a lot of that would probably end up going to the Lancaster Canines and Mounted Police. We try to support them as much as we can, but we also want to support through some larger fundraisers. We thought the bike idea would be a great way to get kids out and active, making a community event. Let more people learn about Hogs and Heroes and our mission. And then also provide, provide a fundraiser for this well-deserving charity. And we were very thankful that Diane and Lieutenant Brewbaker were willing to work with us to create this. I know Lieutenant Brewbaker said that she was hoping to even bring her own daughter to the event.
That's, that's good. It's a wonderful thing that you're proposing and you got a couple of former military guys up here. There's three of us, so. As I look at it this way, two Marines and one Army.
My husband would say something about the Army. He retired Navy.
But I think this is a good thing. I, my one question is for Diane about what's been coordinated with the other clubs that utilize the field and kind of the heads up being given to them.
Yes, there is no use of the soccer fields or anything on the east side of the park that day during the morning hours. And the only thing on the west side of the park is the typical baseball and softball that occurs every day of the weekends through the nice weather. So if you approve the event, we would absolutely reach out to them and just let them know what's going on. As well as we discuss some potential neighborhood notification, just so that they're aware and also if they want to participate.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion of the board?
We, Mr. Chairman, we, we, I, we discussed this with Diane. It's a great event, great organizationally it sounds. They're very excited. Just be mindful that it's a residential neighborhood. So when you arrive at the event, to, to be respectful. There will be bikes involved.
Absolutely, no problem. We may, we will have motorcycles ride in, but they need to be respectful of a neighborhood. They're not, most of our motorcycle riders are older. They're not coming in to do wheelies. Well, we, we can certainly mention to, please be mindful that you're riding through a residential area.
Yep.
And the one area concerned, just to be honest, was the bottom part of the trail that abuts the houses. They sometimes get concerned about soccer and other activities. So just, that's one to be mindful of not crossing the swale for any reason. So that's, that is, becomes an issue with the residents anytime kids go down into that soil. So that's just a heads up on that. Any other discussion of the board?
The only other comment, the only other comment I would have is because of the nature of the event and the beneficiaries of the event, whether it might be appropriate for us to either reduce the, it looks like we took a $50 check on this, to either reduce or eliminate the registration fee. That would, as a suggestion.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Anything else at this point? Anybody from the audience at this point? Didn't think there would be anything, so. Well, I think this is a great event and activity. I'm going to read the, the motion here. And I'm going to add in the elimination of the $50 fee. So the motion is to approve the Hogs for Heroes PA 2 Junior's application to use Amos Hair Park for a bike-a-thon on Saturday, June 19th, 2021, May 30 AM to 12:30 PM as discussed and to include a waiver of the application fee. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Lefever. Do I hear a second? Second from the chair. Ms. Schweitzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mrs. Wigglesworth.
Aye, and thank you.
Mr. Russ, Mr. Russell.
Aye, the dice have it five, nothing. Mr. Wigglesworth is a former state trooper. If it's, thank you for what you're doing is a great thing and it's good to see you again too, by the way. You can pass that around the neighborhood, yeah. Okay, with that, we're going to get back on to our agenda is development services. And we're going to start off with the Farmstead Homestead Village, the final lot consolidation plan for 282428 Lime Springs Way for final land approval. And also the Farmstead Homestead Village revised final land development plan at 2428 Lime Springs for final plan approval. So the floor is yours. And we'll give it Mr. Beck an introduction first. So Mr. Beck, if you want to introduce the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Homestead Village has applied to consolidate all of the lots for the Farmstead at Lime Spring Farm. Currently, there's 102 existing lots and they're going to combine it into 127.496 acre lot. The lot and all of the dwellings and the clubhouse will be served by public water and sewer. The, the project was originally approved as a conditional use for development in the village overlay zone, which was part of the 1994 zoning ordinance as amended. The supervisors approved the conditional use for this project back in May 1st, 2013 with an amendment August 2015. At this time, this plan is fairly clean. It has been through reviews by DMA. Staff does not see any issues with the plan and we're happy to see this moving forward. After the, the initial discussions we've had with Homestead Village, I think this is a move in the right direction and it will, it will benefit Homestead Village and the residents. And with that being said, staff is recommending approval of the final plan for the lot consolidation for Farmstead at Homestead Village.
And why don't we just roll right into the final plan too while we're at?
Perfect. Bear with me, I will bring up the plan. The, the next plan is the revised final plan for the Farmstead Clubhouse. And that project. I apologize. This is actually the second iteration of plan for the Farmstead Clubhouse, which is off to the south, southeast portion of the property. This is a revised final plan because there wasn't originally a final plan approved for the Farmstead Clubhouse. At this time, Homestead Village is moving in the direction through feedback that they have from their residents. They will be raising this building and converting two lots back to for residential use and building a brand new clubhouse in the same location. Again, this is part of the conditional use and as part of the village overlay zoning district, the commercial use is approved and permitted under the 1994 zoning ordinance. As with the lock consolidation plan, this has been reviewed by DMA and staff. We do not see any issues with the plan and we are recommending the board supervisors approve the final plan as presented. I'd like to also point out that neither the lock consolidation plan or the revised final plan require any modifications.
Unusual twist. Hey, Mr. Miller, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. Andrew Miller with Ratu Associates here on behalf of Homestead Village. As always, John's overview was excellent. If you could flip to the next page in the plan set there just to highlight the, there we go. Thank you. Just by way of very, very quick overview on the lot consolidation plan, it does take all the individual lots and condense the entire development into one single lot. All the roads will continue to, the internal streets will continue to be privately owned and maintained by Homestead Village. The emergency access over by Mayor Avenue for Roarstown Fire Department will continue to be maintained for their, for their use when they need it throughout the development. And as John stated, no waivers or modifications. We are in receipt of DMA's letter dated April 20th, which I believe they had a comment or two, which will handle those prior to recording. So we have, we have no issues with that. On the revised final plan, as you can see up on the screen, there's a depiction of what the new clubhouse will look like in size wise. In addition, they're adding back in the two residential units, or the duplex unit rather, to the east. If you recall, the last plan, we had a parking lot in that area. So we're, we're adding that back in.
Well, there's something on the, oh, that's just me.
If we find it, we'll give you a call. I don't see.
Find it, find a little switch. Do it to Diane on the back.
Okay. That is odd.
And then in addition to the duplex, we're also adding 15 parking spaces on the north side of Lime Spring Way to just add some additional closer parking for the clubhouse if the residents need it, as well as some additional crosswalks and a drop-off area. So with that, again, DMA issued a letter dated April 20th with a few minor technical items, which we'll clean up prior to plan recording as well. So with that, I'd happy to entertain any questions. But it's a pretty straightforward project that they're looking to move forward on quickly.
Does this affect our real estate tax revenue?
Homestead Village is a 501(c)(3), correct?
That's a great question. And.
I believe they, I believe they are a 501(c)(3). And then all of, all the properties have been sold to Homestead Village, which means they would be tax exempt.
I thought we had agreement with that. I think Mr. Stanley's on the.
And Mr. Modder's on as well.
Yeah, so why don't we, why don't we turn it over to the guys that developed the agreement in the first place?
Mr. Modder can be muted.
There he goes.
Diane, can you unmute Mr. Modder? Or Mr. Modder, can you unmute yourself?
I unmuted both.
Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Homestead Village is a tax exempt charitable organization, but we pay property taxes on all of our independent living units. The only part of Homestead Village that does not pay property taxes is our nursing home.
And we appreciate that because that's not the case with a lot of our nonprofits. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So, and I remember that discussion came up when we were originally talking about that too. And they had indicated at that time, it was the properties were going to stay taxable. Any other comments or discussions at this point?
Thank you for the clarification, Doug. This project does predate me by several years.
Sure.
Okay, see none. Open up the audience. Any questions from the audience? Okay, see none. I'll break these, both separate motions. We're going to need to do that. So the first motion is going to be for a consolidation plan. Motions to approve the Farmstead at Homestead Village Lot Consolidation Plan, township file 13-15.08, Condition on Resolution of All Outstanding Staff and Engineering Comments within 90 days of plan approval unless extended by the board for cause shown, or plan approval will be null and void. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Schweitzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the dice have it five, nothing. Next up is the final plan approval. Motions to approve the Farmstead at Homestead Village revised. Motions to approve the, the Farmstead at Homestead Village revised final land development plan, township file thirteen dash fifteen point zero nine. Condition on resolution of all outstanding staff and engineering comments within ninety days of plan approval unless extended by the board for cause shown, or plan approval will be null and void. So, do I hear a motion?
No move.
Motion for Mr. LaFever. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, so five nothing. So, thank you, Mr. Miller, and, and good job on, and to your client for having a plan that required no modifications or waivers. That is a very rare land development plan that we have in this township, so congratulations. That's one to put on the wall. Okay, next up, we have the Dutch Valley Auto Works final lot add-on subdivision and land development plan and modifications for Columbia Avenue. Final plan and modification approval. Uh, Mr. Beck, if you'll start us off, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For you gentlemen tonight, um, it's the final plan for the properties at thirty-four oh five Columbia Avenue, which is a single-family detached dwelling, uh, sitting on approximately one point three two five acres, and, um, three, thirty-three thirty-one, which is the address for Dutch Valley Auto Works, which is sitting on one point nine three two acres. The final plan will subdivide a portion of Lot One, which is the, uh, the lot for the single-family dwelling, specifically point three nine zero acres, and add that to Lot Two, which will, um, make it a two point eight six seven acre lot. Additionally, the plan also depicts a garage, a forty-five foot by forty-five foot garage that will be built, and an asphalt driveway extension or expansion. However, stormwater management has already been accommodated or has already been installed and will accommodate the, um, the additional impervious, um, improvements to the property as part of a previously approved stormwater, uh, management small project. This, uh, project, um, has been to the Lancaster County Planning Commission and the Township Planning Commission, and there are three modifications involving curbing and sidewalk along Columbia Avenue and Richardson Drive. Township engineer and township staff are recommending deferral of all three modifications and are recommending conditional approval of the final plan for the Dutch, Dutch Valley Auto Works project.
And you're here for the applicant?
Yes, Brent Good with ELA Group for, uh, Jeff McCollum, the owner. John did a nice job explaining that. Again, uh, looking for, as we understand, deferrals of the sidewalk curb and any roadway improvements that adjoin this, uh, what's technically a land development plan. And, uh, we are in receipt of the letter from DMA dated April second. Find the comments, uh, minor, either, uh, have no problem addressing the comments, or there will be notes, additional notes placed on the plan, and so therefore, um, based on that, looking for a conditional approval from you tonight, uh, based on those outstanding items.
Well, I am glad that your, um, owner, uh, the owner of, of this site has decided to resubmit the plan and go through this process, and, um, I'm glad that, uh, we got over the issues that caused them to want to withdraw the plan in the first place. Um, so we're, we're glad to see him here. I know that these three deferrals were very important to him for even making the project happen, since it was such a small item and such a large expense to do these work on PennDOT's, uh, frontage, um, especially when there is no curb and sidewalk out there today. So, I, well, again, commend your, commend the owner for coming back in and, and resubmitting like he did, so.
For reaching back out. Uh, as you know, this plan was withdrawn, and then, uh, you requested a meeting with the owner and reassured him of some things, and so, uh, thanks for your cooperation as well. So, that's why we're back in front of you tonight.
So, I'll open this up to the, the board. Any comments or discussions at this point?
None.
Okay, anything from the audience at this point? Okay, um, read them. We'll do the modifications first and then the final plans. So, the first one is modifications. Motion to defer modification, motion to defer modification request numbers one, two, and three for the Dutch Valley Auto Works final land development plan, township file fifteen dash twenty-two dash zero four, subject to staff and engineer comments. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett and second for Mr. LaFever. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, so five nothing. Next up is motion to approve the Dutch Valley Auto Works final land development plan, township file fifteen dash twenty-two point zero four. Condition on resolution of all outstanding co, staff and engineering comments within ninety days of plan approval unless extended by the board for cause shown, or plan approval will be null and void. So, do I hear a motion? Motion for Mr. Weaver, and, uh, the chair will second. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, so five nothing. So, thank you, Ms., thank Mr. McCollum for that, so I appreciate it, and we're glad, glad he's in our township and the work he's doing and the business he brings, so thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have the Lime Springs Square rezoning petition acknowledged and authorization to submit a planning review and to advertise for adoption. So, Ms. Switzer, do you want to just give a little, a tiny bit of background? I know we don't normally go into great detail at this stage, but a little bit of a background as to.
I'm going to pass that off to John.
Okay, John, if you can give us a little bit of background on this, this overall situation and what we have occurring right now, and, um, gives a little bit of a background, um, before we forward this on to our planning commissions for review.
Yes, sir. Be my pleasure. For you gentlemen is acknowledgement to, um, sorry, um, is a petition to amend the zoning ordinance, to acknowledge it, to authorize staff to send it to the county planning commission and the township planning commission, and to also authorize township staff to advertise it. So, on the screen, this portion right here, this is Embassy Drive. This is the, um, tire.
Williams.
Yes, Jack Williams Tire. Thank you, Mr. LaFever. This is Lancaster Farm Fresh. As part of a subsequent, uh, land development plan, the property owners will come in and consolidate these two lots into one, and then the original proposal was for two buildings, the new proposal will be for three. But due to some, some, um, non-conformities or some issues that they want to prevent with zoning, they are proposing a map amendment to convert this area right here from Enterprise Zone to Regional Commerce Center Zone. And it has to do with the, the reconfiguration of these two buildings. The new line, since the property line will be extinguished, the new line will be right here. It will be diagonal coming down, and then it will almost meet up with the existing driveway for Lancaster Farm Fresh.
Okay, any discussion of the board at this point?
Reading that in, in preparation, this changes that to conform with the adjoining zoning. Is that, or is it, is it different than the adjoining?
No, currently, currently this area is Enterprise, and this area is Regional Commerce Center Zone. Due to the reconfiguration of these two new buildings that, which will be coming in in a subsequent land development plan, they had to, they have to request the rezoning from Enterprise to Regional Commerce Center Zone for this part, this piece right here.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll still have the Enterprise, but then we'll have the Commercial. I understand now. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion of the board? Okay, anything from the audience at this point? Okay, see none. Read the motion here. The motion is to acknowledge Oak Street Development Group's resounding petition to authorize staff to submit resounding petition to Lancaster County Planning Commission, Easthamfield Township Plan Commission review and recommendations, and to authorize staff to advertise the resounding ordinance for adoption. So, that is the motion.
No move.
Okay, motion for Mr. LaFever. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, so five nothing. Okay, next up, we have the Ratu Associates requesting letter of support for the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant submission for the rest, West Branch of the Little Conestoga Creek. I don't know, Ms. Switzer or Mr. Beck, who wants to start that discussion?
Either one, we, we do, we got this request in from Ratu Associates. They are requesting, they are going to be submitting a grant under the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. As I noted previously, it is due tomorrow. They did not tell me what the amounts were. I don't know if John knows, but it's for the West Branch of the Little Conestoga Creek, which there's very little in Easthamfield Township. Most of it is around Todd Lane, and, um, that's about all we know. It's for planning purposes.
This is related to that, that watershed group of the municipalities led by Mr. Stern.
It's for planning and technical assistance to help develop a watershed action plan for, um, the Little Conestoga, the West Branch of the Little Conestoga.
So, Raffo, uh, Westhamfield?
It'll be, it'll be Manor Township, I believe, Mountville, Easthamfield, and Westhamfield.
Okay. I thought Lancaster Township also.
No, this is for the West Branches, is for the Todd Lane area.
Yeah, this is not to be confused with the Steiman project.
Different.
And do we know anything more, just besides the fact it's just a, a request? There's no financial request of us or anything along those lines?
No, just support.
They're just getting municipal acknowledgements, which is the municipality's got the lead with this with them right now. Which group are they kind of representing?
I honestly don't know. Uh, we just received the emails from Kara Kalupson from Ratu, uh, asking for the watershed action, uh, for the letters of support. We don't know if, uh, any of the other three municipalities are taking the lead. I don't even know if it has anything to do with a, an active plan or active project in the area.
But do we know who the, there has to be somebody who is the applicant on the grant, whether it's the Watershed Association or one of the municipalities. Do you know who's got the lead?
They do represent all the other three municipalities, so I, they didn't really indicate.
It could be a joint application.
With Westhamfield Manor or something at this point?
I, I would, I would venture to guess that it would be, uh, Westhamfield.
Because Ratu represents Westhamfield and Manor and Lancaster.
And Mountville.
And Mountville. So, everybody, everybody busts, we're the alternate.
Second, they are alternate engineer, so.
Okay. Any other questions of the board at this point? It would be good, I'm, I'm in favor of supporting this, but would be good, um, at least after we, as we put it together, to know who we're, what group we're actually supporting. If we can do a little follow-up on that, it sounds like a worthy project, but it would be good for us to maybe an email or something after the fact to kind of let us know which group was taking the lead on it, which, whether it's the township or the Watershed Association that was taking the lead on. Any other discussion?
I believe your comments are appropriate, Mr. Chairman, and, and, uh, there seems to be a lot we don't know about this.
Is, and this is time, is this time-sensitive at this point? I take it with a bow of short nose getting thrown on there?
Yeah, sure, the, the, it's due, the application's due tomorrow.
Okay.
Now, they did provide us with a summary. They actually provided us a bit more than what the, uh, second request provided to us. But we can ask for the, the full submittal, and then who's representing them, or who they're representing.
Okay. Any more discussion of the board at this point? Given the time sense of nature, I'm okay with this. I would normally like to know who the applicant is, but if we could at least get an email to let us know who the applicant was, that would be helpful. I was, it has to be either municipality or the Watershed Association, because it has to be a nonprofit that's taking the lead or a government entity, so. Either one of those groups I would be okay with at this point. So, I will, uh, entertain a motion to authorize the township manager to sign a letter of support for two associates, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Planning, a Technical Assistance Grant Application to develop a watershed action plan for the West Branch of the Little Conestoga Creek. So, do I hear a motion?
No move.
Okay, motion for Mr. Weaver. Do I hear a second? Second from the chair. Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, so five nothing.
You missed the State Road.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, we're going to backpedal for a moment. Mr. LaFever just made me aware that we skipped over an agenda item, and actually a rather important one, which is the reason why we have a guest on the Zoom right now. I see you smiling, because he's, uh, getting nice to chuckle at this. So, we're going to be looking at the State Road Right-of-Way Dedication Resolution Maintenance Guarantee and deed of dedication, which is actually very important right now. So, Ms. Switzer, if you could start the discussion, and then it looks like we got Mr. Stanley on the line to, uh, further elaborate at this point.
Mr. Beck is, is prepared to.
Okay, Mr. Beck, if you could, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go over the paperwork first. We have a resolution that, um, accepts the deed of dedication. We also have a maintenance guarantee, um, the deed of, actual deed of dedication. We have received the maintenance bond. Um, we received it today at, uh, noon. We have, uh, had a meeting today with the developer to go over opening of, uh, State Road, which will occur, uh, sometime after evening rush hour. So, um, after six PM tomorrow night, um, they will begin to take everything down to open up State Road. The new signal at the, the hospital access drive, um, and the east side access drive, they have a meeting with PennDOT tomorrow, and that will go on flash for at least three days. At this point in time, the bearing, the base course has been installed, and the wearing course is planned to be installed sometime between, in, um, middle to, middle of June to late, or the middle of June to early July. They are putting up, uh, temporary traffic control devices, and, um, the trap, Town Traffic Commission agreed to, um, allow staff to handle any issues with the developer and their engineers to reduce the speed limit from thirty-five to twenty-five during the active construction periods. Construction traffic, uh, will be coming into both sites on the west and east via Harrisburg Pike. And in coordination with the State Road Commerce Park, um, they are finishing up the improvements for that, those road improvements at the intersection of Yellow Goose Road and State Road. So, we will have one lane, uh, opening up from Harrisburg Pike all the way up north to two eighty-three.
Yeah, that's good.
Just wanted to add to that. We just found out today during the developers', uh, meeting with us that they were awarded their grant, a portion of, portion of their grant funding from, uh, MTF funding. So, they were awarded some, some dollars. Uh, they are moving forward with the paving, so we might see that paving, that wear and course down sooner than later, but they are working towards that. And they also wanted to give, uh, due credit to Ryan Amant, Senator Ryan Amant. He was very instrumental in getting that funding for them.
Okay, this, this is good news. Uh, do we have anybody from the applicant that would like to talk at this point? Mr. Stanley?
Mr. Russell, yes, you did see me smiling. I was about to raise my hand, uh, send a message. I just was waiting to see what you were going to do. Uh, with me tonight on the phone is both Eric Scott and Craig Malott. We are very happy to offer, um, the realigned State Road for dedication to the township. We've worked very, uh, closely with your solicitor on the review and approval of all the documents, uh, your township engineer for the. We've worked very closely with your solicitor on the review and approval of all the documents, your township engineer for the review of the legal descriptions and staff. Earlier today, we were attended, we attended the Traffic Commission meeting and the Traffic Commission approved the signage plan. And with that as a background, we're here to answer any questions you have, but a lot of work has gone into getting us to the point where we are right now. The documentation has been reviewed by staff, your engineer and your solicitor. And we asked for the board's support in accepting the dedication of the realigned state road.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley, and thank your clients for working with us to get this road reopened up. That's greatly appreciated. I know you had a lot of hurdles to go through in dealing with COVID, did not make the construction season go faster either. So I appreciate everything that has been done to get the expedition of the work going at this point in 2021. And I know the, the residents will certainly appreciate that part being open and will greatly appreciate the bridge work being complete. And so hopefully by fall, we have all three, with this and the other development project and the state project all complete and we have a fully functioning roadway that is now able to handle the, the traffic that's, it currently sees in a very good manner at this point from state road all the way to the interchange. And that would be a good thing for our residents and something that's been 15 years in the making at this point, so.
Mr. Stanley, are you going to hold the celebration party until the bridge is also complete and we'd have one event?
I, I know that there's been discussions with your manager. We thought that it might be appropriate, obviously, to work very closely with you and follow your lead. But there, it may be, the timing may be a little better if we can coordinate it with the application of the wearing course and then the opening of the bridge project. So it would be a brief ceremony once that, all those components are done and are in place.
I think that would be nice and it would be nice to give a couple accolades to a couple of people that had happened to make that project happen, especially the state road interchange project too. So that would, there's been a lot of moving pieces. So I just appreciate, I know how complex getting two different land development projects and Penn Dot all working on the same page as well as dealing with Amtrak as the wild card through all this. It's, it's been a long time coming and it's going to be nice to see this roadway opened up and operating the way it was designed to operate. Any other discussion of the board at this point?
I'd just like to comment, it'll be a great day tomorrow when this, when this happens. And I'm very appreciative of the work that the developer and everyone has put into the, the effort here with, with the new road. Just one question on the light at Yellow Goose and Harrisburg Pike. What's going to happen there and when will it happen?
I think it's already done. There are, I think those, those lights are temporary lights, but the, the structures are all there. I'm not quite sure what you're referring to.
Well, Harrisburg Pike and Yellow Goose, we have a, it's part of the detour. The detour, obviously, will end, will end tomorrow.
The detour light?
Right, the detour light.
Okay, gotcha.
Will the detour light remain there pending the construction that's going, I mean, depending on the new work that's going to happen on Yellow Goose?
We debated that back and forth earlier today. I think Mr. Malott was going to get an answer for us. There was confusion as to their detour plans linked to several other detour plans in terms of the exchange or the interchange. So we didn't have an answer at that time. I don't know if we do now or not.
Well, it's, it's on the radar. You're looking, you're looking at it. Okay.
Yes, okay. We're thinking it's probably going to get removed right after the road is opened, but we're not sure of that.
And it wasn't put in with the act of the, act of the board either, was it, at this point? I can't remember.
No, it, it was, the question is whether it's tied to the detour specifically or the HOP work for Penn Dot. And that's what Mr. Malott is checking into and to see how we can proceed with getting the temporary signal removed.
And that calls the shots as to when it goes up and when it goes down.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Craig, can you update the board as to what our plans are?
Sure, Cindy and the board, we, we spoke with the contractor, Mark and I did later, this, or earlier this afternoon. The temporary signal Harrisburg Pike and Yellow Goose is only supposed to be there while the detour's in place. So when the detour comes down tomorrow, the intent is to have the temporary signal at Harrisburg Pike and Yellow Goose will come down soon thereafter. I think the estimate the contractor gave us is Friday morning, the temporary signal there will be taken down.
Do we have, can we pair a flash and sign up to say new track, give the people a heads up that that's, that change is coming, that section?
Perry, would that be available to put up, out, out there? The flashing signal, I think it's out front right now.
Yeah, where, where would you like it to, to be located? I'm thinking something along Yellow Goose. Basically, people that have grown accustomed to there being a signal there are soon realize it's not one there. Sure, we, we can kind of put it at the end of, I'm assuming like the Tomlinson Bomberger property. Somewhere in there, just give them like a day's notice that the signal's going to go away or something like that, so. I can get that up there tomorrow, hopefully. Any other discussion of the board at this point?
I'm just looking forward to it being open.
We all are at this point.
Like everyone.
Although the Yellow Goose Road act, detour actually did work rather well, just for the record. I've driven that a lot, it actually, it was actually less delay, just because you basically had a Yellow Goose intersection that operated very efficiently because they didn't have the state road traffic with it, so.
Right.
Okay, so anything from the audience at this point? Okay, seeing none. We'll read this. So it's going to be one motion for all this. It's motion to adopt Resolution 2021-18 approving the deed of dedication, road maintenance agreement and to establish 479,711 and 25 cents as the road maintenance guarantee. So do I hear a motion?
Don't move.
Okay, motion for Mr. LaFever. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. Ms. Schweitzer, please pull the board.
Just for clarification, the ordinance number is 20, or the resolution number is 2120. Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Fever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth? Mr. Russell?
Aye, dies have it five, nothing.
Road will be open.
Okay, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley, and thank your client too, please.
We will do that.
We had already covered the first add item to our agenda, the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation at this point. So it looks like the next item to cover before we move on to new business is going up and I'm saying, I'm myself mixed up. We'll, we'll do this. So, so the next item would be to appoint Cindy Schweitzer as the manager for Four Seasons Liquor License. So Ms. Schweitzer, could you explain that real quickly, please?
So right now, the Mac Cafe, which is the former Four Seasons snack bar, they are up and running and being run by Ron Douglas and Kevin White, who represent blue collar restaurant and catering. They do not have the liquor license at this point in time. It still remains with the township. Our former manager resigned, or not resigned, retired at the end of this past year. So we need to appoint a new manager. So in the interim, I am requesting that I would get appointed as an interim manager for the liquor license until such time as it's transferred, which should be very soon.
Okay, any discussion of the board at this point on that matter? Okay, seeing none, aim from the audience. Okay, seeing none. I entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Cindy Schweitzer as the manager of the Four Seasons Liquor License as discussed.
Don't move.
Motion for Mr. Weaver. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. Ms. Schweitzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, dies have it five, nothing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You also have a second addition to the agenda, which was the Little Conestoga Foundation. You did, there were two requests.
Okay, that was what got me confused. So then we'll, we will talk about the Little Conestoga Foundation has requested a letter of support for the grant application of National Fish and Wildlife Foundation with a submission deadline of same thing tomorrow, just like the other one. Ms. Schweitzer, do you want to explain that real quick?
So this is for the Little Conestoga Creek, which is the Steiman Foundation project that you are fairly familiar with. This is starting at the Lancaster Township end at the trailhead. They are looking at design and engineering costs. As far as I know, it's between four and $500,000 that they're requesting. And it's being requested by the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation.
And going back to Mr. Bennett's original question, this one too has no financial obligations at this point.
Correct. It's just a support letter.
Any other questions of the board right now? Anybody from the audience?
That would not be a matching grant?
I am not familiar with the particulars of those grants. They typically are.
They didn't ask any monies from us at this point, so.
No money from us.
Grant though, they'll look for.
It might be coming from the foundation. And they are already planned on giving $500,000 toward the design and engineering of that project.
This is helping offset their, their costs. Right now, I'm working on assumptions, just like the last one, there was no request of us for money at this point, so.
None whatsoever.
What we're coming to is that we're just supportive of the projects.
Correct.
Do we know more about?
At least this one, we know who the applicant is.
Yes.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to provide a letter of support for Little Conestoga Creek Foundation in support of their grant application to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation with a submission deadline of tomorrow. So do I hear a motion? Don't move. Motion for Mr. Weaver. Do I hear a second? Second from the chair, Ms. Schweitzer?
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, dies have it five, nothing. Okay, now we'll move on to item B for action items, the special events. We already covered the Hogs for Heroes. We have a whole bunch of special events. Mrs. Garber, you're going to be very busy for next few minutes, so if you can just run through all of them at this point. We'll go GTO, Penn Legacy and Align for Life Ministries. If you can just go one down the other, it'd be appreciated.
Absolutely, not a problem. You should all at this point be very familiar with Susquehanna Valley GTO. This is their annual All Pontiac Car Show. It will occur on Saturday, August 21st with setup on August 20th. No changes to anything that has occurred in the past and no issues in the past. So it would be our recommendation that you approve their application to hold the car show as indicated. The second special event application is for Penn Legacy. I'm sure in your packet, you can see there are about 20 dates listed that they will be utilizing different facilities, including the Amos Her Park. They have significantly downsized the size of their events due to the current global pandemic. And of most importance on their application is that you would approve the signing of the roadway indemnification form so that they can utilize fire police and constables to direct traffic on Junction Road, Lititz Road, Greystone Road and Landisville Road during their modified tournaments as included in the dates on the application. No changes to anything they've done in the past there as well. And anything that they have done as far as notifications for neighborhoods and so on will continue with these events. And then last, previously or known as Susquehanna Valley Pregnancy Services is now known as Align Life Ministries. This is their annual 5K Run Lock for Life to be held at the Junction Center. Again, important to this application is the signature on the indemnification agreement, allowing them to close Junction Road for approximately one hour on Saturday, May 8th. It is a rain or shine event and will occur from nine till 10 o'clock. They have been in contact with the neighboring municipalities and have approval from there as well. They will utilize fire police from Mannheim and East Petersburg Fire Companies to do the street control or the traffic control on that street. So those are the three special events you have before you and staff recommends the approval of all and signature on the indemnification forms.
And for the, the third one for the junction road, it would assume that they would still allow local access with the fire.
Yes, yep.
So there shouldn't be any real issue with that road closure, right?
And has not been in the past.
Any discussion of the board about these three applications?
Yes, I'd like to make a couple of comments. On the Penn Legacy event, these are a lot of days when potentially A Her Park is going to be utilized in a very substantial way that may limit access to residents. On all of these dates, will A Her Park be utilized as part of the tournaments that happen here?
No, these dates include A Her Park, Crater Fields, Sporting Valley Turf Fields, the Junction Center Fields and the Hemphill High School Athletic Fields.
Do you know which events will impact A Her Park?
I do not have them broken out specifically by date.
Okay. I just do have a little bit of concern there about, about the, the heavy use of the park on, on all of these states and how it may impact the community.
I did just find a note, Amos Her Park will most likely be requested only for Hemphill Fall Classic. Application for use can follow at a later date and the dates for the Hemphill Fall Classic are the 13th and 14th of November and the 20th and 21st of November.
Okay, that makes it, that makes it a better situation in my view. So I'm, I'm good with that. Thank you.
And your discussion of the board? Okay, these are three very long motions. And so what I'm going to do is I'm just going to consolidate. We discussed all three motions. Everything's on the application. And so I will entertain a motion to approve the three applications as discussed.
Don't move.
Okay, motion for Mr. LaFever is our second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. Ms. Schweitzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, dies have it five, nothing. Thank you, Ms. Garber. Next up, we have the Spooky Nook Existing MOU for Fire Police Requested by Staff to Discontinue MOUs. Who wants to explain this one a little bit?
That will be Diane.
Ms. Garber, the floor is yours. This one is interesting.
Absolutely. So several years ago, in order to allow Spooky Nook Sports staff to control traffic on Spooky Nook Road and on Champ Boulevard, we created a memorandum of understanding between the township, Hemphill Fire Department and Spooky Nook Sports. And what that allowed us to do was create a standard that was necessary for their staff to follow, including membership with Hemphill Fire Company and swearing in as fire police so that we were within the boundaries of the law to provide traffic control on the roadways. At that time, they had a significant number of staff who took the appropriate training, were sworn in as fire police and members of Hemphill Fire Department. Since then, over the last several years, those numbers have dwindled significantly. They're down to approximately two people now. They are not meeting the standards included in the agreement and they are not regularly providing their own traffic control on the roadways and instead using constables. And so Chief Skiles and I spoke, Josh, newcomer, the chief of Hemphill Fire Department, and I spoke. And then Chief Skiles reached out to Spooky Nook Sports. And the memorandum specifically indicates that in order for it to be terminated, written notice must be provided by one of the parties. And so it is our recommendation at this time that we provide that written notice to Spooky Nook Sports as they are not in compliance with the agreement and it is not currently being utilized.
Therefore, they will be required to use constables and/or I guess hiring police officers to manage traffic. They must still manage the traffic. Yes?
Yes, correct. They will continue to manage the traffic, but will have to utilize other sources other than their own staff, which they have been doing as necessary for events.
It sounds like they've been probably having to do it for most of these events if they don't have the fire police anymore. Is there any reason what, what happened that caused us to, to fall apart at this point? It seemed like it had so much promise originally.
They've had a significant amount of turnover in their staff over the years and it was difficult to keep the people on staff who had the training. It is a significant training. And it was difficult to keep the people on staff who had the training. It is a significant training class to get fire police certification. And I believe it was easier, maybe not as cost effective, but less time consuming and simple to simply utilize the resources that are already in place. Chief Skiles, did you want to add?
Well, I think you covered it.
If they choose to get their training up to speed though, they, we can't. Notifying them that they need to step up or we're canceling it, or is this a notice that we are canceling it? I guess my question is, if they want to continue, do they have the option of getting their people up to speed?
Currently, they would have to have several additional staff members become qualified and join as members of Hempfield Fire Department and then be sworn in through you, the Board of Supervisors, to meet the constraints of the agreement. We set a minimum number that they had to have to maintain the program. Chief Skiles has been in contact with their director and we haven't seen any response from them that would make us believe that they're intending to make any changes toward increasing the number of staff that they have in place or that removing this MOU is problematic for them. In fact, I don't believe that he even knew it existed from the response that we received.
If we withdraw the MOU, then the two or whatever remaining staff they have would no longer be qualified. Is that true?
Correct, and I passed that on today. I told them they would not be allowed to be on the street directing traffic once we, once we terminated.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Wigglesworth.
So my question is, do they know that this is coming and are they on board with the action that we, that is being proposed tonight?
I would say they were made aware of it over a week ago. And again, yesterday, that we were going to take this action tonight. They did not tell me that they wanted to, to extend it. In fact, what I was told was that they don't use it very often. Maybe at the end of a night, the two, the two employees might go out on the road to clear traffic. And that was the extent of it. It would be my recommendation that if, if they want to revisit it, then we could create another MOU down the road. But at this point in time, having, having two other people isn't really doing any benefit for us or for them.
But back to Mr. Wigglesworth's question, have we had a conversation with Nook Sports at this point?
I would call it a one, a one-sided conversation. I, I reached out to them twice and didn't get very far. So I'll be diplomatic and say they were advised and we didn't get much feedback other than thank you.
And I reached out to them once with the same response.
It sounds like they are currently not compliant with their training. Is that? So they would have to, you know, get additional training just to stay, to keep their certification. Is that right?
Yes.
What determines when they should or must have traffic control? Cause I've witnessed that that's a mess over there whenever they have a large event.
The reality is that they don't need to put anybody out on the street. They were really doing that as a matter of customer service for their patrons to get them in and out faster. But ultimately, if they chose not to control the traffic, that would fall on the police department. Early on, when they first opened up, their parking lot wasn't finished. They didn't have a parking flow plan that would, that would handle the amount of traffic going in and out. We've had full parking lots there and minimal problems.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Wigglesworth.
I'm not against what's being proposed. I'd just rather that either a board member, you, I, or somebody else in the board at least reach out to them. And I don't want to create a problem where there isn't one and, and maybe this needs to happen. But I don't feel urgency for it. And I would at least like to, to have a conversation with the management there from the board to them, if that's possible.
Who, who have we reached out to so far? I guess it would be, who was the contact at Nook Sports that we've been reaching out to that's been kind of non-responsive?
Is that head of security, Diane?
We've reached out to the head of security, the president, and the operation manager.
President being Mr. Byler.
No, he's, he's the owner. The president is, uh, Diane, is it Jim?
Lawder.
Yeah, Jim Lawder. Chris Lighty is the security manager and I'm not sure the operations manager changed. But all, all three have been copied in correspondences back and forth over the last two weeks.
We also currently have fire suppression concerns over there and they've been very unresponsive to our communications in reference to those as well. Both Hempfield Fire Department and then myself because they weren't responding to the fire department, so.
In accordance with Mr. Wigglesworth's concerns, I'm sensing a potential for a problem. And I would just like to suggest that we do something in writing to Spooky Nook Sports officials that establishes a clear understanding of this matter and our position.
Not just this matter, but the, the matter of being non-responsive.
Well, yeah.
I think that's the bigger issue. If they were, if we had communication, we could talk. And so first we got to get the communication established. I, it does not sound like, nor what I've expected, that we've reached out to the owner at this point yet, but it sounds like we're at the point where it might be good to reach out to Sam Byler and go over the heads of those that are being non-responsive, just to establish communication.
Let's, let's staff take another crack at this and we'll bring it back. Well, I follow, I agree with you. I think it should be in writing.
And I think it needs to go to Mr. Byler.
Yep.
It needs to go to the top at this point with, with a request for a meeting.
Sure.
Just to get.
Mr. Chairman.
Meeting is just to get the communications open and going.
Sure.
At this point.
We have a personal injury situation occur. We will be glad if we've documented where we are.
Cause if we're talking more and just fire police, but fire department issues not being responded to and other things, it sounds like we need to get the communication reestablished.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I'll reach out to Mr. Byler tomorrow.
I leave that to you and Mrs. Switzer.
Thank you.
If, if the board okay with that approach at this point?
Yes.
Yep. Since we, did we have this, and this was an action I am, so entertain a motion to table. Okay, motion from Mr. Bennett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. LaFever. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Who's next on my list? Sorry. Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the eyes have a five nothing to table. Okay, next up, we have the Planning Commission Alternatives, Appointments to Fill Vacancies. I guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On April 14th, the Planning Commission discussed the candidates and ultimately they focused on three of them. It was, uh, I don't have my memo typed out, but it was, um, John Spangler. Thank you, Andy. I appreciate that. John Spangler, Ryan Ulrich, and, um, Joshua Boltby. In that order. They eventually did prioritize all of the candidates. So it would have been John Spangler, Ryan Ulrich, Josh Boltby, Mike Rush, and, um, Charles, um, Bratt. Thank you, Cindy. So with that being said, Township Staff respectfully requests the board appoint two new members to the existing vacancies for the Planning Commission.
What about zoning?
They have not met and I, Cindy and I felt it may be the will of the board to wait for the zoning hearing board to meet in May to get a recommendation from them.
Did they discuss or say anything at this point?
Not as a board, no.
No.
I've given thought to this matter through the interviews. We felt serious regret for one instance where the Planning Commission could not make a quorum. And so we have thought it appropriate and I believe to an extent it has been appropriate that we have expanded alternates so that we are sure to always have a quorum there. I have concerns that if we appoint several, two or so more alternates, we deny ourselves an opportunity if there's another candidate that might come along in the not-too-distant future that could be an asset to us. I don't know that, I think any of the candidates have, have a, an interest that is overwhelming and I, I would say that to my recollection, none of them attended any meetings to find out what it's all about. And so what I'd like to do, I actually would be more than happy to stall or table this action and advise the applicants that the board has determined that we'd like them to begin to attend meetings and see how their interest continues or develops stronger, et cetera. There's different opinions as to qualifications of the different applicants. And I believe, this is important, that we appoint someone that really has an interest and will be an asset. As I've viewed Planning Commission and as I've viewed the Hearing Board, on few occasions, but nevertheless, I've viewed, we have some members that don't contribute much, if anything. The boards are led by the chair and vice chairs and the leaders, as is appropriate. But I look for more participation and there are, there are some regular members that, that have spoken and contributed. So I'm not settled on appointing more alternates at this time where I don't see a need. Thank you.
And your discussion of the board before I speak.
You know, I support much of what Mr. LaFever is saying and, and we, and we currently do have an alternate available for each board, so there's no real hurry here in, in my view. So I would, I would be okay with moving this out a little bit and again suggesting to the applicants or, or the candidates here that, you know, they attend a Planning Commission meeting and see if their interest level continues. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a comment or two on this. I know we did receive a memo from Mr. Gueringer from the zoning, or from Planning Commission requesting appointment onto the zoning hearing board. To me, that's a no-brainer. And I did feel that we did have some qualified candidates. We put five people through interviews in front of 10, 15 people. And now to go back to them and say, wait a minute, we're not sure about your commitment. I don't know that that's wise. That's just my take. I think we should make some appointments here this evening. I don't, I, I can understand where Mr. LaFever is coming from. Maybe we don't need to fill all of the positions and we eliminate some if, if that's the feeling that we have to make. But I do think we should make, make some appointments tonight.
Let me ask a, a question. I'm just going to put Mr. Beck on the spot a little bit. How many alternates have gotten into the Planning Commission seats over the last couple of years?
How many?
Yeah, you're, you're just going off the rough of your head. Like, and that Brett Denner was alternate at one point.
Six. Brent Denner, Julie Will, Dan Caldis, Matt Palakowski. So fi- five or six.
Okay, over the last couple of years.
Within, within the last three, within the last two and a half, three years.
So we've been going on with two, two, two alternates becoming a planning commission member almost on.
Since, since I've been the director, we have lost, I shouldn't say, put it that way. There have been at least four people in the Planning Commission that have stepped down or resigned for what, one reason or another. Keith Falco in the end of 2016. Jim Hackett.
Dan, can't think of his last name. That was before Keith.
That was before my time. Thank you, Andy.
Yeah.
James. Mike. And of course, we lost Andy to the election. So we've seen quite a bit of turnover on the Planning Commission. And I would, I would say my time with the Planning Commission, yes, it is a little bit difficult, especially for people that are not familiar with the process or the terminology. But I'm going to use Mrs. Will, for instance. I think she's taken a very proactive approach as much as she could on the Planning Commission. And in the past year, she has really matured in that role. And I, I can't stress it enough. I think out of both the zoning hearing board and Planning Commission, we absolutely do need three alternate members in the Planning Commission for the simple fact that the legal requirement for a 90-day to act on a plan within 90 days. If the zoning hearing board cannot make a quorum, there's a buffer established in the MPC to allow them to push it off at least a month. And we have a stat, we have protections in our agenda, our, our meeting dates. So to ensure that there's two zoning hearing board meetings. But if we run up on a situation where we have a developer that is not as friendly or as willing to negotiate and work with the township as some of the ones we have had in the, in the recent past. And we get up on to an issue where there's a 90, they're coming up on the 90-day date and some emergency happens and the Planning Commission cannot meet. The, the board cannot take action on a plan without it going to the Planning Commission first and having them provide a review.
And I kind of look at the, I, I do have a, a bit different perspective. I look at the alternates as gaining experience so that they can step into a position. So because it requires them to attend the meeting and participate in the meeting and learn. And every one of these alternates that we've moved on, just because your alter is not, I guarantee that you're going to move on to the, the Planning Commission, it still takes an act of the board to do that, just like it takes an act of the board to appoint an alternate. But this is how we build the bench with people coming in here. And I do think that we have some qualified candidates that applied for the, the positions. I think as a compromise, and I would be willing to do a compromise, just because the zoning hearing board has not met yet. I think I would be willing to wait to that occurs. Just as a courtesy, just like we did with our planning commission. Doesn't mean we're going to agree with what they come back with as a recommendation. But I think we would be just prudent to give them the same treatment that we give in the planning commission. But upon that completion of that meeting and their, their discussion of it, I think we should be taking action. We went through this whole process of interviewing these individuals. It's, we, they deserve an up or down vote for appointments. If they're not qualified, that's one thing. And I think there could be an argument that two of the candidates weren't qualified. But I think we got to give them an option. And I think the zoning hearing board needs to know that Dennis Gueringer has, as of yesterday, again, reiterated his interest on being on the zoning hearing board. And he's the only one so far that has shown any interest on being on the zoning hearing board that I'm aware of.
We, I, I, I originally got the email from Cindy and I passed along to all of the planning commission members. So they were all aware. Colin passed it along to the zoning hearing board, so they are aware.
But they've not talked about it yet.
As a commission?
They have not, no, they have not discussed that as a, as a full board. We have heard some, some responses back from one or two, but nothing from the whole zoning hearing board.
So my position is I'm willing to hit the pause button, but I do think we need to take action on these. I think we, they interviewed, we went, we grilled them pretty good at this point. Quite frankly, a lot of municipalities would love to have any one of the five that applied because they struggled to even get anybody to take interest in this. And we have five applying for three positions at this point. So I think we, we kind of own this. I do think on the planning commission, more so than the zoning hearing board, we've had a lot of turnover. And these individuals, if they're qualified, serve as the bench to get the training, they get to see how things operate, to get a year of not actually voting, and then they get put, thrust into the seat if they're ready and up, and able. And we've had some of our alternates drop out too. Am I correct, Mr. Beck? And we had an alternate drop out?
Yes, we, yes, we have, Mr. Purnow.
Yeah.
And it was just a function of scheduling and things going on.
So it does give them a chance to see whether they truly are going to be able to commit to the time requirements while they're serving as an alternate too. So that, that's my, my perspective.
I would be satisfied with your proposals, especially since if Mr. Garringer does go to zoning hearing board, then we would want to for planning. So I'm all right with that, but I just, I've had those thoughts and concerns and I needed to share them.
Okay. Mr. Regal, so are you okay with basically just deferring or tabling until the zoning hearing board meeting?
You mean, are we tabling all the appointments or what are we?
It is a chain effect. I mean, Mr. Garringer needs to vacate a seat. So there really, there is a, there is a process that needs to occur, and it begins with him.
Okay. No, I, I, I'm fine with that. I just, I don't think we need to re-advertise and start the process, so, so that's fine.
So with that, I want to entertain a.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I did want to ask, and so all the board members are aware. The only response we got back as staff from the Planning Commission about Mr. Garringer putting out his name to go to zoning hearing board was Mr. Fullerton. He indicated that he saw it as a separate issue. And they would address that if it came, if and when it came up. So if zoning hearing board is going to weigh in on Dennis Garringer becoming a member of the zoning hearing board, it may affect how some of the other, some of the members of the planning commission feel on their appointments or their, their suggestion, recommendations for alternates.
That, that's fine. I just want to emphasize again, I appreciate the zoning hearing board and the planning commission offering their opinions, but ultimately, the board supervisors are the ones that do the appointment. And we have the responsibility of making sure that we feel our boards are representing and representative of the township. And so really, it is, when I look at the planning commission and the zoning hearing board participating interviews, it's really, can they see themselves working with the individual or not? Beyond that, it really falls under our purview as to the makeup and what these boards look like at this point. I want to give the zoning hearing board the same opportunity, my opinion as chairman, the same opportunity that the planning commission had to weigh in. But ultimately, it's our decisions as to who we appoint.
Has Mr. Longenmecker, as an alternate, been active in the zoning hearing board?
No.
Pardon?
No.
No. I had that sense.
I think with the planning commission, they did rank their choices, so that would kind of cover the situation if Mr. Garringer moves to the zoning hearing board, which I agree with, Mr. Wigglesworth would be, he'd be a great asset to them, I think. And I previously said that I think the planning commission should make the choice, but I think whoever is chosen by the will of the board should have a, as close to unanimous backing from us as possible. So I would defer to the group choice. So I think, I think they need our support. Whoever's chosen.
Does zoning hearing know of Mr. Garringer's interest in moving there?
Yes, Colin forwarded the email with his list of qualifications or parameters that he, he outlined in his email and his willingness to resign from planning commission to be appointed to the zoning hearing board. Colin forwarded all that information to each zoning hearing board member.
Again, to sort of follow up on the, on the Chair's suggestion about, you know, recommendation. Should we formally, do we need to formally request a list of recommendations from the zoning hearing board based upon Mr. Garringer's possible appointment there?
If, if that's the will of the board, staff will, will direct the zoning hearing board to consider all five applicants that were interviewed, plus Mr. Garringer.
Well, they, the, the five that were interviewed, they, most of them said they would go either place. So, you know, once we have an idea of how zoning hearing feels, maybe zoning, maybe, and I'm not sure, but maybe zoning hearing feels strongly, stronger about someone else, we should know that. Not, again, not that we need to put a rubber stamp on it, but we, you know, we should know that. Just like we, we have an idea from planning. And I think we can just make a better decision that way.
Understood.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
That's Mr. Regal.
Just one comment, and I, I'm willing to submit to the will of the board here as, as well on this, but just something that occurred to me, you know, we're going to be asking them for their input. And in my mind, there's just absolutely no reason that we would not appoint Mr. Garringer, Mr. Garringer to that board. However, suppose they come back, I'm just being devil's advocate here, and give you a ranking and he's not on there. Didn't we just ask for their input and we totally shunned it? I mean, that could be a scenario that we should all be aware of.
Again, that was why I was emphasizing they can recommend, but ultimately, we're the ones that appoint.
Okay, very good.
That it's, that's the same thing with the plank, we gave the planning commission that, that same, that same treatment where they got to at least weigh in and, and provide the recommendation to us. Doesn't mean, we have a duty as a board, though, to evaluate the candidates and feel, make who we feel is the best fit at this point, so.
Yeah, we could wrap this up right now, but.
Yeah, but it'd be good to give them, just being fair at this point.
All right.
So with that, I want to entertain a motion that we table this. When do we have the next zoning hearing board meeting?
May 24th.
Okay, so this would be on our June, first June meeting for action at this point. So I have a motion that we table.
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion for Mr. LeFever, second for Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, I just have it five, nothing. Okay, no old business, any new business? I do have a new business item if anybody else does not have one. So I'm, I'm going to put my PSAT's hat on for a moment. We had talked about my people attending the convention, the conference. It was obviously canceled, but we were talking about the educational benefits. The virtual classes and training starts in a couple of weeks. And I would like to encourage supervisors and staff to attend that. And there is a fee, just like we will have paid a, a fee, there is a fee, $99. There's a fee.
No, it was, it was refunded.
No, 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 there's a fee. The virtual, the virtual classes, there is a fee.
No, I, I just registered and it was completely zero.
For the virtual classes?
Yes, sir. I just registered yesterday for classes for the next two weeks, and it was completely free.
They might be pulling it out of this registration.
They might be, there's, it's, I can guarantee it's not free, it's $99.
Right.
So there's, there's something wrong then if, if that occurred.
There, there wasn't, there was an email, and I'll be happy to share it with Cindy. I'm sure she got it too, but I went in and added to the cart and it was, it was nothing. And I even got an email saying that the $99 registration fee was refunded or will be refunded after May 1st.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. I was under the impression it was $99.
I, yeah, I still am under the pressure. I just had an email from PSATs, but I would like to encourage us to participate in that.
What is the course or courses?
It's just like, it's just like the, it's on the website. Basically, once you register, it'd be just like you're at the event, you attend the classes, they're just all being done by Zoom at this point.
And are we going to get this as an email?
Could we send something out?
Probably should have, but yes, I can certainly send it out.
Okay. So if you could send that, I'd, I'd like that to go to the, the board members, any staff that's interested in attending, as well as we talked about planning commission members too.
Not just boot camp, it's, it's.
It's, it's a full, it's the full training for half, half the price, and you, you could be in your pajamas and watch it 10 o'clock at night if you want to.
Yeah, I think most of them are recorded.
They're going to record every one of them, and you can, over a course, so you actually can see more classes than you normally see if you're at PSATs.
Yeah.
So it's a good deal. I would encourage us to take advantage of it. Ms. Switzer, if you can, maybe shoot an email out, and if everybody can get back to her by Friday or so, that's, it doesn't take long, you, either you're in for it or not at this point. And then we get that to PSATs at this point. And it would be, it's a good thing for us to participate in the training. There's a lot of, a lot of good classes that they teach there and a lot of good learning opportunities. And this is a unique opportunity where you can literally watch it in your pajamas at night after it's been recorded, so.
You, you talk about people that want to get involved with the township and, and things of that nature. And right now, our HR person that we just hired, Elizabeth Schiffler, is watching, and she's been on several of the meetings. She just emailed me the John Beck's registration for PSATs, and it does say zero. Not that I didn't doubt, I didn't doubt you, but it does say zero. So they may be taking it out of.
Might not have the refund, yeah.
Yes. But she, she is, has been a wonder, and I just wanted to acknowledge that.
I appreciate that. I have to imagine it's coming out of the refund because.
Right, and he was registered for the attending in person.
Yeah. Okay. So any other new business at this point? Mr. Regal.
Would it be appropriate to continue the conversation here that Mr. LeFever had started about the fire apparatus? And the cost?
Yeah, that'd be a new business item, so go for it.
Okay. So we had our Hemphill Area Fire Services Committee meeting last night. And one of the items that came up was the, the fire departments, I guess, way that we're looking at it, would contribute 10% of the cost of the apparatus. And we would pick up the rest. And this is just in draft form. And there was further discussion about some other items, but I think there's been a long brewing feeling from the fire departments that, you know, we're not supporting them to the level that we should be. And there's a dynamic there that I just think we should discuss, get out on the table. And in, and in the end of the day, ensure them that we 100% want to support them. And personally, I don't think they should have to contribute 10% towards the apparatus. The rub is that there's many, all three of them are sitting on certain amounts of money that they have saved up through one form of another. And it somehow that there's got to be a meeting of the minds on what's an appropriate amount of savings for them to have for their individual organization. And that's part of the conversation. And I think the second part of the conversation needs to be among our board that we're fully prepared to support and commit to the apparatus that, that we feel is necessary to provide the service to our constituents.
I'm, I'm not sure, I'm hearing you, I, I sort of thought you were saying we should fund 100% on apparatus. But then I'm also hearing that you're saying that because of resources and things that they should be supporting some of this. I'm not sure.
Well, temporarily, I mean, they have some funds right now that those funds will, you know, at some point become exhausted. They're not able to raise the money that they were in the past. They have a significant amount of savings right now through being left money from estates and wills and that sort of thing. I think we need to have like an understanding that, that we fully want to support their fire departments, that we don't want them out raising money or having to, to do fund drives or chicken pot pies, those types of things. We understand what they're doing and the services they're providing for the township. At the same time, we have a conflict in good conscience. While they're sitting on these sums of money, it's difficult for us to fully fund a piece of equipment without understanding exactly where and what they're going to use those funds that they have saved up for.
Agreed. There is another dimension to this discussion. We have committed to the East Petersburg Fire Company an amount of $85,000 toward their apparatus schedule of replacement. And that does constitute about 10% of a new piece of apparatus. In fact, the amount I believe is targeted that way, if I remember correctly. And then we have the, the, the question or the fact that they also in East Petersburg have their fire tax funding. So it's, it's a complex matter. And when I saw that 10%, it caused me to wonder why or where that originated. And it's not that it originated in the house, it's something that Mr. Cottenmeyer has known in his experience. And so the question is, is that going to be our position, or do we need to consider something in a much larger picture? I agree completely that they should not have to be out doing potluck suppers and that kind of thing. They should spend their time training in that. Another element of that meeting last night that I think is appropriate to share is that I've had a feeling despite the tuition and the tax benefits we're given to encourage the volunteerism, that there should be other measures that we do as much as possible, even articles in the newsletter illustrating a particular intern that's in the process in the fire company, or, or one that has 25 years of service, or, or whatever. Or if we get a new piece of apparatus that we give it some publicity to build that esprit de corps that is so important to the volunteer fireman. If we go to paid firemen, we're going to lose some volunteers because to them, their mantra is that they are volunteer firemen. That is the most important thing in, in their life in many cases, or at least second to their family, maybe. And I, I suggested maybe some T-shirts, and I, I, I got some real rebuttal on that from one of the chiefs about that that was sort of a cheap shot. And I respect his opinion on it, but then he also went to say that we're needing to go to paid fire companies right away. So we have a, we have an attitude here that I, I just, I think we can do more, and whether it's insignificant things or whether it's significant things together, they can maybe make a difference. I just opened that up for, for other input and thoughts of how we can build that belonging attitude of our volunteer firemen.
Chief, Chief Cottenmeyer and I had a discussion this afternoon, and he's with you. He understands, he fully understands. He understands that each, each fire company is different. Each fire company's needs are different. He also understands that there's a, a component to the township, also a component to the borough because they're different. It's going to take a, a level of trust, and we have to build that trust. And I think that's what he's trying to. And we have to build that trust. And I think that's what he's trying to do. And we just have to somewhat step back and allow him to do his work. And I think he can get it to happen. We may end up with the paid department, but like everyone has said, we want that out into the future. As far as we can make it. And, and I think he can, he can bridge that. Gap and keep us on a steady pace.
Well, I would suggest, Mr. Wigglesworth and Mr. Lefever, you guys are light years ahead of the rest of the board. And kind of I'll be honest with you, a little bit of what you were saying was at one point went over my head. And I actually pay attention to this stuff. I would suggest that I, I do agree with the. The baseline for finances and I do agree, we need to provide the maximum support that we can. For our fire companies. And there's nothing I disagree with what was said tonight. But I would encourage both of you maybe to have a working group meeting with Mr. Cottonmeyer. And just to start flushing some of these things out and then maybe a little bit of a plan or something back to the full board. Would be something that would be, something that we can talk about and take some action on. Whatever it might be at this point, even if it's just kind of a policy. Of this board. So we could do a resolution or something that lays out our policy or our direction to the. The fire departments, whatever, whatever we need to do. For the support that you guys feel is necessary at this point. But I would encourage you guys to meet and. To tackle both these issues. And. And, and as with staff, come back with some recommendations.
And we have the funding of a piece of apparatus for Hempfield, which is still on the table right now. And.
The Chief Cottonmeyer, we also had that discussion as well. And, and the chief at Hempfield has, is a bit lost at this point. They need the equipment, but.
We are, yeah.
And, and we need to tie that together. And he's aware of that. And he'll, he'll, he'll bring things together. He'll do some presentations. He'll meet with the Public Safety Committee. And bring everyone up to speed and then bring it to the, to the supervisors. Needless to say, I'm quite impressed with Mr. Cottonmeyer at this point in time.
It's, it's all valid concerns. I mean, we do have to have baselines. That was one of the reasons. We brought on a fire official is to kind of start establishing the baseline, get some standardization between the three fire companies. Help out with a lot of the administrative tasks that they're getting overwhelmed with. Those are all things we're looking to do. So I would, I would just encourage the Public Safety Working Group to. To meet and come back with some things and have. Work with Ms. Swites or maybe we do some resolutions, some policies, some recommendations for upcoming next year's budget. With finance and admin tying that into it. And come up with a holistic approach to our fire services.
Unfortunately, it's never going to be fast enough for them. We just need to show progress.
They just want to be known that they're being heard.
Yes.
And that's half the battle is that they're being heard and they're being listened to.
I don't want to be, be too negative or get off on a negative tangent here, but you know. Ed and, and Scott know much, much more about this whole, whole issue than, than I do. But I would say, you know, I, I, I'm a little concerned that, that I hear that we're not. In some way, we're not supporting our. Fire departments or we're not supporting them enough. There's this undercurrent that, that I feel when we get into these meetings. And that undercurrent develops because it always seems to be about the money. Where does the money, where does the money, are you gonna, are you gonna do this or are you gonna do that? I've only been here three years, but I can't remember there's ever been a time when we haven't really. Supported the fire effort in this township. We support it financially and we support it with two of our board members who work tirelessly. In trying to bring this fire services organization together. We now have a, a chief fire commissioner. Who I think is exemplary is exactly what we need at the time we need it, but. But I think, you know, I, you know, we have supported the, the fire companies and. And I, and I, and I would, I would point this out and we have, and when they've needed something, we find that we have found a way to do it. It's sometimes it's taken a little bit from here, taken a little bit from there, but, but. Again. You know, I'm concerned about the, the undercurrent. I think there need, you know, this is just, again, just my view. I think the top people in all these fire organizations need to be coming together. And. Become more unified than we are. We, we, we have to break down this. Colloquial, you know, this, this is my, this, this is what, we're here. We're East Pete, we're Hempfield and we're Roarstown. We are one organization and I know it'll take some time to do, but. I really think the sooner we can get down that road, the sooner we can deal with some of these other issues that are out there. And it's just. Just some of my thinking on the situation.
I'll, I'll echo your discussion with the point that we have never. Ever, even with the two thousand eight and two thousand nine crisis, we have never cut. Public safety funding for police or fire as a way of bouncing the budget. We've laid off staff. We've done other things, but we've never touched our public safety budget. Through good times and especially through bad times. And every time there's been a request, we have met it and funded it. And we have, when you look at other municipalities with the level that they fund fire services compared to us. We are exemplary with how the level of what we do. It really comes down to it's a communication issue and. And the. And, and just listening and, and them listening to us and us listening to them. And the whole reason we brought on a fire official was to try and fill the void of the communication issue. And that's what I'm hopeful. Will, will be occurring at this point.
If you're willing, Chief Cottonmeyer would like to have a comment.
I would certainly love to have him come on.
Good evening again. Yeah, I just, again. You know, discussing with the chiefs and we've had meetings with the chiefs of the departments. And as I commented earlier, you know, fire apparatus, one of the major expenses for, for any fire department. And I think the departments as a whole, even, even, you know, you go back last year, fire department funding. From their perspective, any, any type of outside income sources because of COVID greatly diminished. And I think there's a fear of that, you know, and what, what the future holds. Their funds are dwindling. Stations are getting a little older. They're costing a little more money to repair. Apparatus getting older, costing a little bit more repair. I don't, and, and I don't want it to sound like anyone from any of the departments is saying that you are not giving. And, and I don't think that that is true. I think you are. And I think the budget and I think everything shows that, that you are committed to it. As Cindy alluded to, it is sometimes things don't happen fast enough. They don't have, happen quickly enough. And, you know, in the case of like out in Roarstown and things with the dwindling membership, they have few people doing a lot of things. And it becomes overwhelming. And part of like when I say about like, you know, going to the fire chiefs and saying, what, what's one thing that I could take off your plate that would make. Make your life a little easier. And, and you know, one of the things that we talked about was the apparatus. Knowing that that type of stuff is going to be replaced or there's funding for that. It also comes with, like Cindy said, that trust, building that trust. They do have funds and if, if they're going to ask the, you know, the, the township for, for funding, I also want to know that they're going to utilize their funds. To, to also offset some of the stuff at their station, whether it's repairs, updates, upgrades. Whatever the case may be, because, you know, as a five oh one C three, the funds that they get are still coming from taxpayers, from citizens. And the expectation is that the money is going to be used to maintain the fire department. So it doesn't matter whether it comes from the township or from others. Through a five oh one C three and a fundraising event, it's still earmarked for the same thing. And, and you know, I just want to build a trust between both that, you know, hey, the township is here to help. The expectation is also that the funds, you know, and, and, and the community would have that expectation. Is those funds that, that, that you collect through that fundraiser go to the fire department? The, the whole thing with the apparatus and, and the funding and, and like, for, for example, the hemp field. Fire apparatus. You know, they're looking at their overall picture with looking at, you know, what they have in their trust funds and everything. And there's some situations that occurred prior. We won't get into the details of that, but essentially it's not what it used to be. And, and they're looking at the future and, and repairs and things that they're doing to the station and otherwise. And they're, they're looking at the commitment to doing that as well as then how are they going to fund some of these other things? And it becomes a little overwhelming to a fire chief. The ten percent down, you know, down payment that the fire departments, you know, I don't think that that's, that's asking a lot. I think that that's something that, you know, we should at least ask. And, and if we can pick up the remainder through a lease purchase program, I, I, I think that's kind of a win-win situation. It's, it's kind of. It's killing, you know, two birds with one stone. We're, we're getting the commitment for the funds that they're receiving from, from the fundraiser. And, and we're also supporting them a, as we say we are, which, which it would be. You know, if there ever comes a time where they're not receiving any funds or it's like, you know, they really don't have anything, that's a different story. But I think there has to be some fiscal financial responsibility on, on their part as well. That the funds are actually being put back into. And I think they are. And I'm not saying they aren't, but there just has to be that trust built that. Hey, we're using the funds that we get to do this. We need help from you for funds to do this. And it's just, I, I, you know, the schedule that, that I came up with is simply to show and outline and it is just a draft. And they're just numbers, but I wanted folks to see if you're a fire chief or if you're in charge of a department, this is what's staring you down. Almost on a monthly basis. And the older these apparatus gets, they become maintenance intensive and they cost a lot of money. And, you know, a, a transmission or a pump goes out or in an aerial device, you have some major. This, i- i- it's, it's a worry. It's a constant worry. And, you know, I know that weighs on them heavily. So when I asked that question about replacing the apparatus. That was amazing to them that, that we would work on something like that and try to work this out. So that's sort of where that came from. And, and I'm hopeful that we can work to that. We're working hard behind the scenes to try to get this, the whole Hempfield thing working. There's, you know, a little bit with the, with the bid specs and, and wanting to make sure that they're getting everything that they're asking for. And, and then I'd like to, you know, in, in very short order, maybe at, at next month, come to you with a presentation, say, look, this is, this is what we have. This is what we'd like to do as far as, you know, going forward to purchase their apparatus because. If it's a five percent increase, I know it, it may not seem like much in the big picture. But even the financing alone, just looking at the lease option purchase and doing it that way versus the two separate loans and the two percent loan from the state. We can save probably about a hundred thousand dollars per apparatus if we do the lease purchase. So over the period of many years and apparatus replacing, you know, several apparatus, that's, that's a few dollars to, to, to save in our pocket. So it's just, you know, thinking outside the box and doing some alternatives, looking at other choices. And then making sure that we're getting what they need that's going to do the job and, and is, you know, going to hold up over the years. And thank you.
Thank you, John.
Very well said. Thank you. Any more discussion on this new business item at this point?
I'll just add my two cents. I'm not an expert on this either. I heard enough about Susquehanna Valley EMS's equipment. Sounded like it wasn't up to snuff and. You know, I have several thoughts on, on this whole topic, but mainly. I think ten percent is not maybe a whole lot to ask. And I think it gives the fire company a goal. To get a new piece of equipment to something to work towards. I think it makes sense that the older the equipment gets, the more maintenance it, it takes. And so. Buying new equipment may actually save some money for the fire department. So it's a complex topic and. I think we definitely support our, our fire department and want to keep doing that. Have we ever considered a, like a subscription service or? Something of that nature. Everyone benefits from having the fire department. It's kind of like insurance, share the risk. Do we, is the risk being shared? Did we, like, how much? Of the budget is made up by donations? That would be something I'd be interested in. I mean, the township supports the fire department. Township gets tax money. So that may already be happening. So I don't, like I said, I don't know a lot about it, but.
I do like the, I appreciate that comment. I do like this suggestion from Mr. Wigglesworth, Mr. Cottonmeyer. About us having a baseline with where the, the fire companies are financially. Remember when years ago, we had the Rec Center, Rec Commission. Coming to East Hempfield looking for some assistance. And at that time. The Finance and Admin Committee asked them to open their books up. And it was eye opening at that point. And what happened is it led to a lot of good reform. That has now put the Recreation Commission into a good spot. But had that funding request not come and had we not countered with, before we turn over a lot of public money, we want to know. Where the funds were going. Part of the requests, we wouldn't have the reforms that were in place today. I really would like to finally have an answer. As to what our finances are for our fire companies, really know the down and dirty of where. Strengths and weaknesses, where their, where their budgets are at right now and, and where they're at and what their funding levels are and what their, their burn rate is going through their. Donations at this point and how the donations came in for COVID. All these, these financial numbers have really. Helped make a better picture, at least for me personally. On what, what the finances look like for our three fire companies.
Yeah, we had started to look at that. It's not complete.
I recognize, yeah. That would be, I mean, I look at what we did with the Rec Center. That was a good, that was painful at the time. But the, the, the final result of what we got now with, with now. New management running and a new focus on things. It's, it's turned that operation around. And. It would just be good, I think, as part of this process, as we start talking about truck purchases and stuff like that, we should have a good handle on what. The real finance, financial situations of the three fire companies are at this point.
We're flying blind unless we know.
So any more discussion on this one? Okay, well, that's what new business is for. So there we go. We usually don't have a lot of it.
You said you had one, didn't you?
I recovered mine. That was a P Sats thing.
Oh, yeah.
That was at the very beginning.
All right. You want a commission report?
Yeah, Traffic Commission report, Mr. Lefever, please.
Well, we earned our fee tonight. We spent the whole hour. And Mr. Stanley stole my thunder though by telling you that we approved the State Road Traffic Signage Plan. We deferred to staff a. Management of reduced speed temporarily on the new section of State Road. During the current period, at least until the final. Top coating is done and maybe evaluating then the status of the construction activity. So that we're trying to induce and maintain some safety. We're going to do research on Embassy Drive where there's been a twenty-five mile an hour speed. No, I'm sorry, there's been a. Yeah, there's been a twenty-five mile an hour. Possibly it should be increased. Yeah, increased to thirty-five. Lidl, we have a, a right turn only situation that's causing some potential traffic risks. And we're looking for Lidl's six month traffic. Report, which they owe us and see what that includes. Speculating it may be to eliminate the right turn out on their Columbia Avenue Gateway. But we will wait and see their report before taking any action. So we had two residents of the Wheatland Avenue. I'm trying to think of the name of the voting district over there. Friendly, the friendly area that concerns speed on their streets. Not unlike anywhere else in the township, but they asked us to look at things. And, and we asked them to see if they can get some plate numbers of some frequent violators that have been noticed by the residents. And are difficult for our police to be able to find or see. So we're trying to deal with that with them and showing interest in their concern. That's the report for the Traffic Commission this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Move on to Development Services. Mr. Beck, if you can just give the highlights, please.
Yes, sir. We have the official map moving forward. Planning Commission recommended adoption and that'll be coming to the board at the May fourteenth meeting or. the second May meeting. The staff has sent the building identification signs to County Planning Commission. The Township Planning Commission recommended approval, and that will be coming before the board at the May 5th meeting. The State Road Commerce Park final plot revised final plan was recorded this week. 701 Stony Battery Road, I just received a report tonight that their project is ahead of schedule, and they will be recording the plan within the next week or two and moving forward with getting the building permit application. Nothing new for 791 Stony Battery Road. Traditions of America, their Phase 3 final plan was received two weeks ago, and it seems that their plan was done pretty well, and it will be moving to the Planning Commission for the May 12th Planning Commission meeting and subsequently to the board. The Knoll Road Cluster Development Project is scheduled for the May 5th Board Meeting for Review and Conditional Approval. And just to make the board aware, we have received, staff has received a few emails and a few calls from residents in the near Genoese Drive that live on North Donerville Road concerned about the Ironstone Building Materials Project. I put them in contact with the engineer, and I haven't heard anything back at this point. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions?
I could just make one comment on the 2260 Dairy Road Billboard Conditional Use Hearing, zoning hearing, where the zoning hearing board approved the two conditions for the placement of that billboard. I hope I would hope that both conditions could make their way into the new sign ordinance that we're we're planning to review. Those two conditions were that the height of the billboard wouldn't be any higher than a close building, number one, and then number two, the change of message agreed to by the owner was 20 seconds per before it changes, dwell time, whatever whatever that's called. So I would ask that you take a look at that when we get to the the changes. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for Mr. Beck?
I have one. The the official map, could you just explain that a little little more, what that is?
Yes, sir. The East Hemphill Township Official Map is a combination of four different maps. The first one being a map that addresses parks and trails. I'm sorry, parks, trails and open space. A second map addressing roads and transportation. And a third map addressing stormwater management projects or stormwater management improvements. The fourth map is the combination of all three of those maps put in together. The Steering Committee thought it would be a good idea to keep those three plans separate to make it more legible or easier to read for people when they're looking at those plans. This is the final planning tool that East Hemphill has to adopt. This will work in conjunction with the Comprehensive Plan. The zoning ordinance, the subdivision land development ordinance, the stormwater management ordinance, the street and sidewalk ordinance, and it will become a tool for the for the township to negotiate with developers and property owners in the future. It will also help the township as a tool to secure grant funding for future projects such as stormwater management or for subsequent road projects that may come down the road where an official map that's adopted by the township can be used to show that the township has an adopted plan of action for whatever that grant application may be for.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. The reason that is, I've been thinking about something for a little while now regarding township owned property. I don't know that it needs to be part of this, but I thought it would be good for discussion for the board at some point. Portion of the golf courses zone residential. It is my view that the current board would never allow that property to become resident units or be developed. And I think it's something that perhaps we should look at to get the zoning in line with the rest of the property that the township owns there. I don't know if anyone else on the board has thoughts on that.
I'm the only board member that's still on the board the last time the township tried to sell that property. And I have no issues whatsoever for us not to go through that process again. So.
What property are you talking about?
The Nicely Road track of the golf course.
When we took the house down.
Yeah, that was at one point, the, when I was first on the board, I think it was 2010, 2011, somewhere in that range. There was a desire at that point to sell the, to put the property up for sale, and that did not get warmly received at the time. And subsequently, what that led was ultimately led to us forming the Recreation Commission and the authority that we have now and and rerunning our golf course operations. But it took a roundabout way to get there. So that one thing actually caused the at this point. I've stated many times, I think that that would be a great location someday for a centralized facility for fire services if we ever were down the road to consolidate our fire services. That location is dead center in the township and gives immediate access north, south, east, west to our two interchanges into Marietta and Columbia and to Harrisburg Pike. It's an outstanding location. And that would only take up about two acres of that 22 acres, 24 acres, however many acres that is. So given the perspective of a lot of the residents, the fact that we really don't need to develop it, we don't need the money right now. I'd be in favor of kind of memorializing that position. Unless somebody would like to go through a lot of public hearings, making the case for selling it.
Are we looking for a resolution that we're we're not gonna?
Well, I think that's just Mr. Wigglesworth is just throwing it out there. There's a lot of steps. That'd be a rezoning. We'd have to actually change the map if we went down that road.
I was thinking maybe start with the planning group with, it's currently zone residential, and I don't think it, my opinion is, we're all going to be off of this board at some point. And I think it's our will that that land not be used as residential or turned into residential property. So whether it's done by deed restriction, whether it's done by resolution, whether it's a rezoning to fit with what else the golf courses currently zoned as. You know, I just, I think, I don't think we should have it there zone residential when it's never going to be residential. I guess is what I'm getting at.
I want that to be part of my vision for Four Seasons is with some recreational things, some ski slopes, some tubing slopes, maybe. And, you know, there's a lot of potential there in that area.
That would definitely be a challenging course to try and make a putt, that's for sure. I have, I can't make a putt on level ground, level on a slope. We also do have a big picture at at some point, too, about the stormwater facility that we were talking about putting there to address the swar run flooding that starts in on Church Street and then continues down into Mill Creek Development and then continues all the way down the Bowman Road. That's the headwaters and the best way to address the flood. Downstream flooding is to address the upstream headwaters. So that's something that's I can do to at some point. Okay, that's glad you brought that up. Any more discussions at this point? I think if everybody's okay, we would take that up with the planning group unless there's any issues at this point. Okay. So Ms. Schweitzer, manager's report.
So in brief, jumping to Farmingdale Road, we were fortunate enough to get a grant from the MTF of $993,000, which is what we asked for. So that's going to go to support that whole long-term initiative. The downside of getting that grant is there's paperwork. So we can't do anything until that paperwork is in place. And we're dealing with PENDOT, so it's going to be probably a summer project as opposed to an April project or early spring. But we are moving forward. We are moving forward with the rights away. Trying to get those accomplished as well. Four Seasons, Blue Collar, the, as I indicated earlier, Mac Snack Bar is open and operating and has a fairly extensive menu. If you haven't been there yet, definitely give it a try. It definitely has different options open and available and worthy of a stop. The library, I was approached by two ladies from the neighborhood. They are interested in creating a little lending library located for at the entrance to Ehret Park, which is a great idea. You got a copy of their letter. I'll be working with them to figure out an appropriate location for that.
You solved a mystery for me. For some time, I've noticed what's an oversized birdhouse on a post at East Petersburg Menonite Church. Right along the sidewalk along Main Street. This evening, passing there, there was a young family, and they were getting a book out of it. So it's one of these library things. And I would suggest that if they, if we are going to allow them, and I think it's a good thing to allow, that they should be allowed to be inside the covered bridge so they have some more weather protection for their facility.
I did suggest that, but they want it to be obvious, too, that not necessarily, maybe some of the soccer players or some of the parents watching soccer wouldn't go through the the covered bridge. So they're, we're going to look at it.
Yeah, they have one in Letts, and it's actually, almost looks like a soda cooler. It's got a clear glass on the one side so you can see the books. And you open it up and you take a book out, you put another book in its place, and it's kind of like a book swap. And.
There couldn't be too many books in the one of Petersburg, but.
Yeah, this one, this one was about the size of a soda machine. And and had a door on the front of it, and it was, it was called Little Library. And you could, you can look through the window, you can see all the books that were there. And I guess if one struck your fancy, you would open it up. It was not locked. And you could pull something out.
One of the, in Landis Farm.
Yes, at at their pavilion, yes.
It's a growing trend. The idea is you're supposed to take a book, leave a book everywhere.
Yeah. More good news, the PIB loan that we had taken out in 2011 for 2.4 million has been paid off as of January. Joe Robinson got the paperwork a few days ago. That was originally used for repairs to Nicely Road, the basin repair for the township roadways that year, engineering and construction of the pole barn, the salt shed and guide rail and repairs and replacements. So that that PIB loan has been paid. That was a 2% loan. You have a copy of the reports or the group reports and some meetings that I attended. At the very bottom there, you see Chantel, which is a new internet provider that has approached us for a franchise agreement. I have the documentation that I'm looking at now. Our attorney from the Cohen Law Group has also looked at it. That will be before you, probably at your May 5th meeting. They will do a presentation for you.
They want the whole township?
They will start with two hubs and branch out. The difference between the Comcast franchise and this one will be that there's no guarantee that they'll cover every area. They will make every attempt, but they won't commit to make to covering every area. They're going to start in Roarstown in Landisville and then fill in and around.
We get a stipend every year from Comcast, do we not?
Yes, 5% of their their revenues, limited revenues, and that will be the same for this one.
These folks will do similar?
Yes. Now, the, it's not free money because Chantel's Comcast customers will go to Chantel, which will lower Comcast, so it's going to be about the same in terms of revenue to the township, but it will give another option to residents.
And realistically, it's not free money because we're all paying for it.
But true, that's true.
They don't pay a cent of it. They pass that 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 franchise fee on to all the customers.
They do.
But I I agree, it'll probably be more of a wash at this point, you know, because if Chantel came into my neighborhood, they would have a lot of Comcast customers that would probably jump ship. I can't see, I mean, that's the only way to get internet, so it's going to be either Chantel or Comcast, and pretty much all the homes are wired for internet at this point. We don't, most of us don't have, most of the older communities don't have that as an option.
Get it through your telephone line.
Not, not the fiber stuff, not the good stuff. That's what I'm saying, not the fast stuff that could, that could actually deliver to Comcast speeds.
The difference between Comcast and Chantel is that, as they will explain, but the download speeds are incredibly fast, much faster. The upload speeds are much faster than Comcast, which is their selling point, particularly if you're working from home.
Are they actually fiber versus copper like Comcast?
They are fiber.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
It's good for Comcast to have some competition.
It is, isn't it?
They don't have the band, it's, they don't have the bandwidth to support either, so that's, that's just a good thing. Their their copper lines have started to get to capacity.
So that's the end of my report unless there's questions.
Any questions for Ms. Schweitzer? Okay, we will now open up to public comment. Is there anybody here that's offering public comment? There's nobody left in the room. So Garber, is there anybody there? And I see you shaking your head now. So with no public comment, it is now, it looks like 9:28. And we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.